This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Library Board of Trustees on Tuesday, December 17, 2019. And with that, first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
Yes, Malavika.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none? Call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agendas, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Public with comment is the next item on the agenda. No one is present, so we will move on to reports and communications. First item there is the Friends. Laura.
Good afternoon.
Thank you for being here.
A couple of updates. The biggest news is that last week we got news from Central Credit Union that they will be pledging $25,000 to the capital campaign. So that's really exciting. We also heard that QCBT will not be able to support us past the $1,000 that they had initially pledged. So we're going to look at going back to them in future years for perhaps a bigger pledge. We're kind of surprised by that. The Special Events Committee has identified April 30 as the night that we will have our kind of unveiling of the public phase of the capital campaign. So we're going to bring in some entertainment. As of Thursday night, we will be charging for admission, and we're hoping to kind of have some buzz and excitement around this event and then, you know, raise some money through that. Got a bunch of other asks out for the capital campaign, and things moving along in that regard. There will be a point in 2020 that we may want to talk about or have the trustees talk about, and we've had some offline discussions on this, but the use of the levy funds and considering, you know, applying those to support the capital campaign. So I just kind of want to tease that conversation, and perhaps, you know, we can add that to an agenda at a later meeting and have the trustees discuss that.
Thank you, Laura. Any questions from Laura or for Laura? Okay, not moving on. Committee reports, finance, any comments on finance?
No, when I glanced at the budget recap, it looked like most of our expenses are running a little bit below the percentage of how far we've gone through the year timeline. So that looks good, but, you know, it could also be just a function of timing, too. So.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on the finance report? Yeah. Okay, hearing done. Move on to personnel. Is Judy on?
No, she was.
Oh, I'm sorry. Judy was unavailable. Had her on the wrong list there. Okay, so no one from the Personnel Committee, so we'll pass on that. Advocacy, anything, Malavika?
Steve and all, I talked with Riverbend Food Bank, and for winter, they do not need our Fairmont location. They thanked us, but they do not need the Fairmont location for winter. They will get in touch with us for summer 2020, later during spring 2020. That was one. Two events coming up, in case if we would, as Board of Trustees and anyone from Friends would like to participate, is recycle the runway of dress for Success Quad Cities. We participated in that last year, is coming up in April 2020. And a next important youth event, which is second time which will be held in the city, is TEDx Youth, which happens in March, I think 29th March at Fortnum. So just these two events, thought maybe if we want to participate as Board together to be there. Outreach, participation.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Malavika? Okay. Moving on to the next item on reports and communications is the Director's Report. Amy?
Okay. As you noted in here, Steve and I did have a chance to meet with two of the aldermen elect, and I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to comment on that or at all?
I think both were very good meetings, though. A lot of good questions. They were interested in the library. One said that they learned a lot of things that they didn't previously know about the library, and so that's good. And looking forward, and they seem to be very supportive, and we appreciate that.
In terms of budgets, the request that Steve made to the city for some additional funding so we could extend the hours at the branches, that's, you know, based on just budget information we've gotten back from city staff, it looks like it's perhaps reasonably possible. So that's still in the works. It hasn't just been, you know, completely xed out at this point in time. So we're pleased about that. For our main renovation project, and just a quick update that with some changes in public works and how they are supporting project management, it looks like Eric Grabbert will likely be assigned as our project manager for the project. We felt that we're far enough along now that we wanted to pull the city back into that if we could, in terms of getting, you know, somebody who knows more engineering and work with contractors in terms of project management for that. And Eric, for those of you who have been on the trustees for quite some period of time, was involved in our initial meetings with the architect, so he's familiar with our project. So, and then I wanted to let everybody know, just, you know, once we have the vehicle up and running, or even a little before that, if you happen to see the vehicle or a library van or whatever, over visiting some of our friends in Bettendorf, there are some Quad City area agencies that are headquartered in Bettendorf. The Autism Society is one of them. They provide services to residents for the whole Quad Cities on, who are on the autism spectrum. And they've asked if we would come and provide some programming to them, so we're not going to say no, just because they happen to be headquartered in Bettendorf. So if somebody says, what was the library doing over in Bettendorf, you know the answer is bad.
Outreach.
And then, I don't know, Marion, if you want to talk about census, or if you would like me to do that?
We can, you go ahead, and I will fill in if I think.
Okay, that's fine. I think you've got it. So the 2020 census is coming up, as everybody hopefully knows, and Marion is chairing the city's Complete Count Committee, because it's so important that everybody get counted, because there's a ton of federal money associated with that. And just from a library perspective, there's a lot that we can learn from the statistical information gathered in the census about where our library service is needed, where outreach service is needed, all those kinds of things. There's nothing on the agenda in terms of the library becoming a 2020 census partner. And so if you feel we need like a formal vote in order to do that, then I guess we might have to wait until next time. But otherwise, if we think that that's just kind of something we could go ahead and do, we'd like to sign up as a partner with the 2020 census and be an official partner. That just gives us access to be able to kind of publicize more. We've already talked about having the outreach vehicle, you know, go out and or just simply have phone books available, which we plan to have anyhow, some signage up so as we're at Party in the Park or wherever we might be, if people want to fill out their census forms right then and there, they'll be able to do that. This is the first time in the history of the census that they are asking people to fill it out online. So there will be a paper option, but they're really pushing the online.
And there is a huge issue in the core area of the city. We had like the Census Track 107, which is just north of downtown Gaines over, had a 53% return rate. Iowa tends to have a 90%, and parts of our city have an 85%. So 53% is horrendously low, and it's the people that probably most need, could ironically, the population that could most benefit from being counted and the additional federal dollars that might come from, you know, being counted. So that's why we did, we've never had a complete count committee before, so we've engaged with this committee, people all across the city, and Amy has been part of that, the library's been a part of that. It's, you know, it's really imperative that we raise those numbers. So we do get people counted anywhere in the city, but it's particularly an issue connected with poverty, sometimes ethnicity, also the high renter shift, that's another factor. And so you'll be hearing a lot more about this. The partnership thing is sort of something the census has come to people and asked, would you be, and you could be a partner by a number of different things, and they have window clings and things like that. But in any case, they're really asking for people to do this, to step up, so that, you know, it really gets to all the populations that need to hear about it, so.
What is the window for completing the census form, from when to when?
Well, it starts, okay, in March, you're going to get, we'll get postcards. The parts of the city will get letters and postcards saying goal line and do it. Parts of the city will get letters and postcards, and they'll get the paper census. And you can start in like mid-March filling it in. It goes until August. But the big push is March through the end of April, and census day is April 1st. So that's the day. And we are talking about everything from public events, getting churches to do census Sundays, and have people stay after and fill in their census, you know, just different kind of things besides just, you know, getting the information out about it. So, but they want to get as many as they can between that mid-March and the end of April, because then they start sending out, they have to start sending out enumerators to knock on doors.
Okay.
And so if they can get that done in advance, it really helps. They are hiring, still hiring people locally. The fee has gone up, the pay has gone up to $21 an hour, it was 15. It's gone up to 21. It's 22 in Rock Island County, it's slightly different everywhere, but they really are behind in getting people to sign up to actually do the work of the census also.
Would there be a way that we could, because they want to do this online, is there a way that like we could take the library van out that would have Wi-Fi on the van, so if somebody came in to the van?
Yep, yep, we talked about doing that. Absolutely.
Right then and there, okay.
Yeah. So we talked about in each of our three locations having, especially during that prime period, have a computer available that just, you know, has a link to the census form and just is reserved for that. That way people won't have to worry about logging in or anything else.
Good, good.
So those are the kinds of partnerships they're really looking for. And then pushing it out in any social media, pushing it out in the newsletters, you know, anything that, you know, people do to kind of push it out. And I've been talking to other people, you know, it's, everybody gets asked to do things, but, you know, Iowa, like I've talked to Iowa American Water, and they're going to do something, and they don't usually do that, because they get asked about everything. But they understand, this is like, this is different. This is, this is, it's every 10 years, it's important to the community, it's required, you actually have to fill the census in. I mean, it's like illegal not to fill it in, so, which is interesting. But, you know, it is the way we measure, this is the way we measure the people living in our country. And we do it every 10 years, we'll be doing this since 1790, so. So, in any case.
Yeah, and I guess I don't see anything. Something to me that I could fit right in nicely as a library program.
Okay, okay. Well, we'll just go ahead and we'll sign up then. You mind?
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Okay.
I think that's it for me. Marion had anything else?
Any questions of Amy or Marion?
Marion, Marion?
Yes.
Marion, this is Malavika. I just have one quick question. You did mention that they are pushing it through social media. Is this, is this any local social media, I mean, local by local, I mean, Quad Cities? I mean, and if it is, then is there a Facebook page, and could you share that, Facebook or whatever?
I can share what I'm going to, and I was going to invite you to be on that committee, and I did not, so I will, you will get on the list. One of the things we're asking people to do is not, there is not one Facebook page for the 2020 census in Davenport, maybe there should be, but we are all, all the cities have different committees. We are using, we count as sort of our theme, and it's, whether it's Davenport or Rock Island, or your neighborhood, or your religious organization, or your school, you know, we've created a logo that can be branded as, because the idea is to get the message as small as possible, like everybody counts, and even very granular, to get it really granular. So it's global, but then you can take it down. And we are going to have a Google Docs page that has some scripts, it'll have some other information. We actually have that now, we can get that out. But we're looking, actually, they're looking for people, you know, on your own social media, I mean, to share about jobs. And so we all sort of, in our own little patch, kind of lift this up as well. Does that make sense?
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you, thank you for it. And I can see things like Nextdoor that the city uses.
Yes.
Would be fun. Okay, no, I get it. Thank you, thank you, Marion.
I'm sure that if you wanted to promote through St. Ambrose social media, that would be awesome.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Yes, and we have already contacted St. Ambrose, so they, you may, and I cannot remember the name of the woman who's our contact there, but they are already talking about things they're going to try to do at St. Ambrose. So certainly, and you'll get the name when you get on the list.
Fantastic.
So there's people actually that are attached to St. Ambrose that are involved at this point besides you. So that's the kind of thing, to try to get, try to get it spread very far.
Absolutely. Absolutely, because I can see this in the Local School Improvement Commission that I'm a part of, so, you know, I could talk about it there, that's what I was thinking. So I will, thank you, Marion, yeah.
I just had one other thing.
Oh, sure.
If you're for me.
Sure.
Okay. So we are going to be, City Council has had its last meeting for the year. They're tearing up the chambers and trying to put wiring in where we can be heard. I've been projecting a lot, the last couple of months, never sure your mic is working. In any case, so we will be back. Our first City Council meeting is January 8th, because of New Year's being on the week before. And then, but we do have meetings every Saturday, starting January 11th, going through February 1st, and that will be budget meetings and talking about the planning. We have been through a planning process with, where each alderman kind of puts goals out and just got that information back. I don't think I can, you know, it's not public yet, so, in any case, I don't think it's, but, so that's very, very broad, looking at the big, big goals. So those are public meetings, they're not for public comment. We sit around that table down in chambers and just talk to each other, but there's a lot of breaks and people come, and there's conversations in between, so it's not a formal City Council meeting. Great way to spend your Saturday morning, in any case. The other thing, so also wanted to mention Party in the Park. You guys were, library was a fantastic partner last year. We sat down and did sort of a post-op about a month ago. We will do eight locations next year. We did seven last year, we got started late, and we'll do two starting in May, so two in May, June, July, and August. We're again doing it across the city, we're again picking different neighborhood parks, so they will again have that neighborhood feeling, that's the point of this. And so, so we really appreciate your participation in that, and really, staff seemed very excited about it. People felt, council felt good about these events. I will not be the Community Engagement Chair next year, so that will be Maria Dickman, and I kind of got involved with Party in the Park as a community engagement chair, but I'm not giving up on who built your neighborhood and who's your park named for. So I'm going to be, you know, working on those kind of things, where it again is sort of my contribution from the council, and something I like. Also, I just wanted to, and I don't know if there's anything here for the library, this is very long range, you know, there's a lot of excitement right now about the possibility of, with the Viking cruise, and I don't think there's any end all and be all, anything is that. But there's, ultimately, there could be many days of Viking landings here, like not three or four a year, like a lot. And if this other cruise line, who's now also interested in docking there, they will be docking at River Heritage Park. That was where they wanted to be, they wanted to be in the Upper Basin. They're used to, some questions I've gotten, it is in Third Ward, by the way. So, yep. So they, they're very used to taking people by bus somewhere, so people had questions, well, gee, they're not right downtown. They didn't want to be in the Lower Basin, they wanted to be in the Upper Basin. They're used to taking people by bus places if they need to. And so, you know, this will roll out, but one of the things is, you know, we will have some opportunities here that we haven't had in the past. I probably, the library seems like a long stretch, but one of the things you have here is you have a great resource down, a geological resource down in your basement, and there may be some, that may be the connection for, that may be a connection for the library as part of this. I mean, I know when I travel, I make plans to, I'm traveling for that, I'm going to take time to go and do research. I don't know if everybody knows, you know, what a great resource that is, and I don't know how you promote that, but in any case, you know, just, I think everybody, there may be an opportunity for everybody, not that everybody has to do a lot of work for this necessarily, but there may be an opportunity, so I don't know if there's a link. One of the things, come the new year, and I've already, also had people ask me about this, that I guess Visit Quad Cities is going to head up some sort of discussion, but I'm going to reach out to Dave and say, I'd like to get, make sure everybody's around the table, because I'm already getting questions about this. Of course, that's also the part for the first bridge, if that is, that's where that project goes. So there's lots of interesting things happening in that part of town, so.
They do architectural tours, we have.
Architectural tours, that's right. And that may be something indeed that we don't have right now in the city. We do not have architectural tours. So, and we have a boatload of new information, architectural information, because we have these, with the two new historic districts, we have a lot more information about the buildings downtown than we ever had before. And I don't know if you had mentioned that, we talked about that the last time, about the new draft of the, of the new historic district?
Yes.
Okay, all right, all right. So, yeah, so that may be the library's hook, you know, because nobody's, there's no place to meet to do that right now. So, in any case, you know, something, and it's two years, but something to think about for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Moving along on the agenda then, moving to new business, discussion of idea of a coffee cart for Main. Amy?
So, this came up at the end of the last Friends meeting. One of our, one of our Friends Board's members, her sister runs Cafe de Marie, so apparently they're interested in expanding a little bit and just kind of getting their feet wet in that, and they're wondering if with the renovation, how we would feel about the idea of not a full cafe or coffee shop, but the idea of like a coffee cart that would be in the building at Main, and somebody be there going in and serving and selling coffee. Is that something we think we might pursue?
It would seem like something we could look at. We obviously would have to be concerned about liability issues, and there would be the question of hours for this coffee cart, and then where in the building would it operate? I mean, these are all logistic questions, which don't preclude it from happening.
So everybody knows that I'm pro-coffee all the time. Anything involved, be like, yeah, let's do that.
Oh, you're part of the coffee committee.
Well, I kind of talked about with the renovation at first, putting in the actual coffee area, and it was so cost prohibitive, I think, kind of shied away from that, but it's just a lower scale. And then it was so prominent, and then we don't have a vendor, and now we have this base, then how do we use it? But if it's a cart, yeah, it's like that would kind of self-contain, like maybe it can carry its own water, and we just need to plug it in, so.
Yeah, they have stuff like that, they have one at Lake Hy-Vee that's kind of like that, isn't it? It's small and anyway.
You see sometime at like at conferences, you know, something rolls into a hotel or something like that, I guess.
I like the coffee cart idea, and, you know, maybe if it is placed at certain locations within the library, like, you know, I mean, I don't know what would be the concept right now, but, you know, the specificity that it, you know, it moves, but it could be on the first floor or second floor, whatever, but that's a lovely idea. I can see it steaming, I can see it being popular, but, yep.
Okay. Right now, can you take drinks anywhere in the library? You can, as long as they're covered. Okay. Yep. Yeah, well, not in special collections. Okay. Just wondering about genre, sort of. So, okay, so what I'm hearing is, is that something that we should pursue some specifics with then?
Yeah.
Okay, we will go ahead and do that then, okay?
They have very good food at that place.
I like that place, yeah.
Haven't been there, but I wanted to go.
Take your wine.
Okay. There's no other discussion on the coffee cart. Move along to old business. Approval of the library nondiscrimination and harassment policy. Just heads up on that, Malavika had some suggestions, she wasn't able to be at the last meeting, but in order to bring this to the floor, I need a motion to approve the library nondiscrimination and harassment policy.
Don't move.
Thank you, Tom. Is there a second?
I'll sign that.
Okay, thank you, Amanda. Okay, we have motion and second to approve the nondiscrimination and harassment policy. Is there any discussion?
Steve, I had, I had a few points, but they were too many, so as you know, I sent them down to you.
Yes. Okay, one, one thing that Malavika had was about the possibility of linking the references to the Iowa code, so that, you know, if you're looking at this online, you could go right to those. That's, I think you asked about that same thing in regard to the bylaws.
Yes.
Yeah, we will look into that, see what we can do there. The next item, under the definition of harassment, is, do we need to mention that following is also harassment, which says not in the definition, hostility or aversion towards an individual because of his, her, they, race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, age, national origin, disability?
Is, where did that language come from?
I guess from looking at it, I would think that that is present in a lot of different discrimination policies.
Yeah, yeah. I had seen a few library discrimination policies, as well as on the Affirmative Action Commission, we had talked about these things. So those were the ideas that came to mind, and that's how I inputted them in it.
Who is it, basically taking the different categories from the Equal Employment Opportunity section and saying, any kind of discrimination based on those, is that where it's coming from?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, making the definition, I can't call it definition here, because that's not what is in the definition, but including everything, not everything, almost everything under the umbrella, because it is what I felt, like, you know, should we be detailed in our approach? I mean, I wasn't sure, I just thought of including some details rather than just the definition. I just thought of including some details rather than just the definition of harassment.
I mean, I.
I don't have the language, I don't have the language, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I don't think it hurts. I think under harassment, it already says, anything that offends a victim and results in a hostile environment. I would think that, you know.
Yeah.
Whatever you're saying or doing on those bases would probably be, you know, fall within the demeaning, threatening, intimidating.
Right, right.
This would just be further specified why they were doing those things to the victim, I guess, or the basis for them doing that.
Yeah.
In that regard then, could that limit it? Or that specific rather than?
The language you read is what you're saying, or questioning?
Well, if you add.
Is there some other characteristic that they're basing it on?
I was just thinking what you said, Amanda, about whether that was covered under any unwanted, unwelcome, or uninvited behavior.
I guess I don't know what's in Iowa code 708.7.
And, and this also kind of, you know, if I can highlight, this also was a topic of discussion on the ALA think tank groups, which are there online, like the American Library Association groups, you know. So that's what, that's where I was gleaning these things from. And as I said, you know, this is not the language, but you know, what all is included so that it's clear to the employee, non-employee, patron, and the customer, or the customer of the library. So, you know, so again, this is just a thought for us to think, I thought, to share.
I mean, if you wanted to include it and not limit it, then I think you would just have the first sentence. And then you would say harassment includes what is not limited to, you know, any behavior or words that, you know, are, I mean, I guess on, any discrimination on the basis of, and then list all those things again, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
And then just go into sexual harassment is characterized by blah, blah, blah.
Okay.
It'd be like adding, adding a sentence after the first sentence that says harassment includes what is not limited to, maybe discrimination or, yeah, hostility, we could use that as a hostility version. Right.
Yeah, hostility version, sorry, I don't have that.
Yeah, oh, sorry. And then we could.
Yeah, right.
Perfect. And then we could add, and then to have that last sentence, Steve, is.
Yep.
I don't think it hurts anything before that.
Are there questions or comments on that item? Next item then is should we include reporting procedures in the policy? For example, maybe a form or any contact information for reporting.
And, and again, the thought was, and again, my thought was, is this essential? Is this required? I mean, I don't know, but I just thought, should one make it easy on the individual to report it? Again, I'm not sure whether this is provided by all libraries, but just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, in the last paragraph, it says they should make it known to library administration, but I guess I don't know specifically who they should be reporting it to, making that a little clearer so they know.
I, I, I saw, I think it was the Seattle Public Library. And the form came to my mind because that's what I saw on the Seattle Public Library. You know, so that's, that's how I wrote the form part. I think it was Seattle Public Library. To just, I mean, it was just ease of application to complain.
Yeah, I think we didn't necessarily want to say, we don't want to make it too narrow because with my registration, that gives somebody a choice of four different people that they can talk to. So if it's somebody who doesn't feel comfortable talking to me, they could talk to Lexi or Jennifer or Casey.
So could you, did you define who library administration is?
What their titles are.
The titles, yeah, not the people, but the titles. Which includes blah, blah, blah.
Okay, right. Because I think we want to make sure people feel like there's more than one option there, for sure.
And can they all, let me just, I'm just asking, can they also come to the board of directors' president? If they want to go completely, I mean, so. On board of directors.
Good question. What is that speech?
So for that one, we'll, we'll add the specific positions in admin and then include the president of the library board of trustees.
Because it is true, you want to make sure that there are multiple options for people to report depending on their comfort level. Because that's what it's all about, make sure they're comfortable doing, saying what happened.
Okay. Item three, harassment allegations against employee, excuse me, harassment allegations against non-employees and third parties. Says, I was thinking of this when patrons and guests attend library events or meetings, making it clear that the library has limited control on taking action.
Now, now my thought, my thought, Amy, is, is this necessary? I mean, I, I just wrote it down, but is this something that the library has experienced in the past that a third party, especially a patron, or someone other than a patron, maybe somebody visiting the library? It could be an agent of, maybe a Wendy. I mean, I don't know whether this has come any time to light in the library, a third party making an allegation.
Yeah, as Marion mentioned, like for example, maybe a contractor. I know when I was working at Mid-American, our harassment policy had language in there about an employee harassing a contractor or vice versa. So I think there's maybe something there we can change. I know it talks in here about library harassment can occur between library patrons, between library employees, or between library patrons and library employees. So this.
So we could add contractors in there? Add that in.
Yeah, because you may have, you know, some contractors which are very temporary, but others, like for example, if we do the coffee cart thing, we could have a contractor in here all the time.
And maybe we could just say third parties, for example, contractors or something, because that would be.
Yeah, we don't have that yet, it's not.
Rather than nailing it down then.
Okay. It could be somebody renting a building or renting a room, you know.
Right.
So I don't know, what you call that? Are they customers, not customers, what do you call people who rent things here? Or do you have a name for them?
You, people are booking meeting rooms?
Yeah. A for-profit, a company can't book a room here.
No, they can't.
That's true.
It has to be a nonprofit.
A nonprofit.
But they're responsible for what happens at their meetings.
You could say contractors or other third parties.
Yeah.
Such as.
Sure.
Any other questions, comments, discussion on that item? Okay, next item, do we need to mention about false and frivolous complaints? And what might our action be against such?
Maine, I don't, I'm not sure I understand.
Well, I don't like you, Sylvia, so I'm going to say you harassed me. And you didn't, I just don't like you. So that's a frivolous complaint. I think that's what Malavika was, I don't, I don't mean that, you know, that's what you meant.
Yeah.
I'm crying. I'm a little, I'm a little precious today. No, okay, I, I see what you mean, but it's, how would one ferret that out without, just like a, you know, you just have to go forward with an investigation, right? I don't know. Am I missing something here?
No, you're, you're right, in a way, sorry.
Wrong, is that what we're saying? Well, I think that, I'm afraid that if we put it in here, that it might be chilling on somebody who has a legitimate complaint.
Right, I agree.
And I, maybe we deal with the other on a case by case basis.
No, I think that's.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I was thinking too. That's what makes sense to me.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, then last item, do we, excuse me, do we need to include harassing conduct? May include, but not limited to epithets, slurs, stereotyping, hostile acts, intimidating, denigrating jokes, et cetera?
I mean, I think it's examples of.
Wow, what about pictures?
About what? Oh, pictures?
I said, what about, because that's been, I mean, people have spoken to me, not with regard to the library, but that that is something that's happened in their workplace, that there's, there have been demeaning pictures in the environment. So I don't know.
Right, right. You could say.
I mean, as long as you have a list there, why not just add that to it too?
Behavior, media, or words, and media would cover emails, photographs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Like that?
I, I, I understand that, but it, you know, it still seems to me that the actual definition we already have in front of us, I mean, the part where it says, and results in a hostile environment for the victim, I mean, to me, that, that isn't right there. However, you create a hostile environment just by creating the hostile environment, in whatever way you do it, verbally, in writing, whatever you do.
But devil's advocate here, because we have called out specifically behavior in words, could somebody say, well, I didn't say anything, you know, I didn't like.
Exactly.
I just, I just.
And that's.
You know, that, you know, sort of.
That's, yeah. I'm sorry, I don't mean to talk over you, it's a little hard though when I'm on the, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, we understand, you're up, go ahead.
No, I just, I know that, you know, in past, you know, again, other situations, there's a lot of, you know, wiggle room, like, yeah, well, I didn't say anything, you know, and nobody said anything to anybody, so how can you say blah, blah, blah? So I've just known that, you know, pictures and slogans and little things attached to your computer, you know, little sayings and so forth, can create that hostile work environment without anybody saying a word. So I don't know, I mean, I'm not.
Well.
I don't know.
Again, our definition already says, any unwanted, unwelcome, and uninvited behavior or words that annoys, demeans, threatens, intimidates, or offends the victim and results in a hostile environment for the victim.
I mean, is there a way to add like just behavior, actions, words, nonver, or non-verbal conduct? I mean.
Ah, that's a good one.
Non-verbal conduct.
That sounds.
How about replacing the word word in the first sentence with in any form?
Yeah, that.
Harassment is unwelcome, uninvited behavior in any form? I don't know.
It seems like they would cover it, right?
Yeah, I think so.
There you go.
Yeah, now you're going, you're doing this or this.
I provided that, and we haven't voted on it. Okay, okay, well, that was the last of Malavika's suggestions. Many good ones there?
Thank you, Steve.
Malavika?
Thank you, Steve.
Is there anything else?
Not, not from my end, thank you, Steve.
Hey, you're welcome. Okay, so what we have on the table is a motion to approve this. So I would suggest that this is a suggestion that we not approve it. And then we'll put this on the agenda for approval.
I vote to table it for, till the next meeting.
Ooh, we can do that, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to table this agenda item. Thank you very much, Tom. Until the next meeting and we will call for the vote. Is there, well, first of all, I'm not sure that that's subject to discussion, but is there any? Seeing and hearing none, call for the vote on the motion to table this item. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay, let's see. Oh, yes, of course, next item, approval of the proposed changes to the bylaws. This has been toying on for a long time. They have a motion to approve the changes in the bylaws.
So move.
Thank you, Tom, is there a second?
Yep, second.
Second.
Thank you, Malavika. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the proposed changes in the bylaws for the library board of trustees, is there any discussion?
In as much one word, that doesn't, that is not really relevant. I'm just looking at it. In as much, I've never seen it all as one word.
Okay, you don't correct any spelling errors?
It's good. I like it.
Okay. Seeing and hearing no discussion, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the proposed changes in the bylaws for the library board of trustees, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Heard enough ayes there. And the motion carries. Next item is the approval of the 2020 implementation of the strategic plan. We talked about that at the last meeting and that was included in your packet. They have a motion to approve the implementation of the strategic plan, 2020.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion over here. And a second to approve the 2020 implementation of the strategic plan, is there any discussion? Seeing and hearing none, a call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion to approve the 2020 implementation of the strategic plan, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Although, excuse me, just said that, sorry. Motion carries, thank you. Back of my feature. Okay, if there's nothing else to come before this forum, I would. Appreciate a motion to approve, approve, no, no, adjourn. Thank you, Tom. Second?
Malavika, yes.
Okay, thank you. Have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Just one more thing, would you want to hold that up again, since we have more people on there? Or did you already?
Or did you send it? I sent it to Malavika and I think.
Yeah, I forwarded it to Sylvia Nagme.
Okay, great, oh, okay.
Yep. So this is our, the graphics for the, for the vehicle that will be coming in January, so.
Yeah, cool.
Very excited.
Thank you everyone so much for your time, appreciate it. And adjourn.
Happy holidays.
Yes.
Happy holidays.
Sorry, I was late.